Same reason like grown adults go. And same thing goes all the way around.
We're good to go.
We're good to go. All right, it's off running, everything's going outstanding. Then if we can, we'll call this meeting to order at seven oh four, four minutes behind schedule, which is one minute. I normally am going three minutes. I'll go for a roll call and we can now move to the pledge.
Very good, I'll start with the mayor tonight, Mayor Paul Cameron.
Eric.
Councilmember Mark Castillo.
Eric.
Councilmember Diane Law.
Yeah.
Councilmember Frances Lee By.
Here.
Councilwoman Cheryl Williams.
Here.
And Hillary is not with us, she's not on board. So all good, what's President Chair?
I am still here. All right, thank you very much. Uh, now if you can rise for the pledge, would you consider able? A pledge like this in the United States of America. And to the mother, which stands on the nation under God, in the visible, the memory of justice. All right, all right. You are here. It is March, they're packed and busy, it's right around our corner here, even if some people may have enjoyed the weekend. And all of the uh. The magical wonderful parade space. Uh, but for here, we move into uh. Our March meeting, and this begins with public comment. Uh, and so the purpose is public comment. Uh, if you'd like to comment on anything, you've got three minutes, if you can stand, if you're able, if you're in the group. Uh, state your name, uh, your address, this is for taxpayers and residents. Uh, and at that time, you'll have three minutes, once I've gone through people in the room. Uh, if there is additional folks who, for some reason, I can't get my thing online, so. Uh, but if there's additional folks who are interested in speaking online. Uh, we will then move to the online forum. And at the point that we move to the online forum, if you raise your hand, if you're able. Uh, to see that there's a thing that says raise hand, we will follow you, promote you, and you again will have three minutes to speak. Uh, after which time, uh, we will move out of public comment. That being the case, uh, I will start as I say in the room, I'll start on my left, your right, front and back, so anyone on this side who uh would like to speak. And Lisa. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, my name is Kathy Bordenor, I live at nineteen twenty-six Hempstead Drive. And uh, I'd like to speak tonight about the proposed ordinance, conditional use ordinance for the short term rentals. The existing conditional use ordinance for the Westinghouse side, and I have a question for the candidates also, and I've already given that to them. Um, on the proposed short term rental ordinance, I noticed in B eight that there may be a spelling error. It's refers to orders, O R D E R S. And I think they may mean odors, O V O R S. Um, also in B eight, it states the rental must comply with the borough's noise ordinance. During the Amazon council voted, during the Amazon fight, council, council voted five to two for Hillwood's conditional use permit. Jade Warren and Diane Law indicated they voted in favor of the permit because Churchill does not have ordinances. Like a noise ordinance that would give them a reason to vote against the proposal. So do we have a noise ordinance that would prevent loud parties at a short term rental? Is council considering adding strength to the noise ordinance? If not putting this in this or uh proposed short term rental ordinance would be ineffective. B eleven states the use shall not cause a negative impact on property values in the immediate neighborhood. I really like this. I do have some questions. Is this enforceable? And these questions are for Gavin, if he could possibly answer them, I think others would be interested. Is this enforceable? If so, how would you enforce it? Would people have to have their homes appraised to prove the property value suffer? How would they prove it was because of the short term rental? If this is enforceable, I would suggest that you rescind ordinance seven fifty-five, the conditional use ordinance for the Westinghouse side. Rewrite that ordinance with the input of residents and include this uh statement in that rewritten ordinance. Um, also finally on the topic of the Westinghouse uh conditional use ordinance. I don't think it's right to have an ordinance on our books that was written by Hillwood LLC. I encourage you to rescind that ordinance and rewrite it and include the residents in that process to rewrite that ordinance. We have many residents who are very experienced, have background, have an interest. In seeing good development on that site, and they would be more than happy to participate in that process. And uh, my question for the candidates is. What are your thoughts on including residents in the process of drafting a new conditional use ordinance for the Westinghouse side? And I requested my comments be included in the uh minutes of the meeting and Alex. Uh, I'll send you uh email with my written comments, if that's okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, appreciate your comments. Uh, of course, one of the great things in terms of the minutes of the meeting is that we've moved a few years, yeah, during COVID times, having everything recorded. So that we are able to not only keep the written comments as as minutes in the meeting and if you want them attached. But then we actually keep the videos itself available to the public as well, which is uh. Just in general space transparency, I think something that has been a great plus that has come out of the space. Uh, a lot of questions, so I'm gonna hold back a little bit. Um, only on the enforceable space, though, I don't know if you want, if you did want to comment to that or not. Uh, I don't think I'm gonna comment with regard to a new ordinance or kind of where we go with a new ordinance right now. Um, only because we're in the process, quite frankly, of looking at the ordinance overall. Uh, and so I think we're reviewing all of that. Uh, so kind of to your, to your general point of are we looking at strengthening, we're looking at strengthening all the time, but particularly. Knowing kind of where we are in kind of a post-Amazon space, I think it's in the benefit of. Uh, all of Churchill that we review the ordinances that they put together, what's best for for the community. Uh, and that is something that that the committee uh is currently working on. Uh, having said that, uh, I will defer to you for a brief moment before kind of moving forward, if you wanted to speak, but if you don't, I understand as well.
I will say, uh, thank you, Ms. Bordenor, there was definitely odors and non-orders, so we'll definitely get that corrected. Uh, and with respect to. Items and ordinance, we would not put them in there if you didn't feel like they were enforceable, so I'm gonna just leave it at that.
I think that's a fine comment. Uh, all right, I'm gonna move forward, is anybody else on this side? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Nicole Armstrong, I live in four forty Woodman Drive since two thousand and four. I might have two comments, I mean, they're really fast. I'm probably the only adult in Churchill that does not drive, so I walk a lot and I walk Buella. And the, the car at the near misses, I, I mean, I just wanna bring it up, I just wanna keep it fresh, because people. I mean, I've almost been killed, just, I'm walking on this side, someone passes here. And, and first we're not expecting to see me, uh, but I mean, I've really had some near misses, but there weren't quite, there was an accident in Kingsdale. And then a few days later, a pretty serious one at home, so I just wanted to bring that up. And my question for the candidate, and I'm sure they've thought about this, is what are some ways that they can, they, they see room for improvement in Churchill? Cause I have to say this, and I'm sure a lot of people agree, I just love Churchill, so how could we make it better? I mean, I just really can't believe I live in such a nice neighborhood, so yay Churchill.
Both, both ends of your, of your comments.
Yeah.
Uh, a couple of things that I would just point out, folks. Uh, first of all, on the traffic space, just, just to recognize, because I also, you know, I mean, I don't play now, but I, I walk in crunch. And uh, it, it is, you know, there are some very dangerous and very difficult spaces, you know, I'm. I come up from Garrick, so I live up Garrick, so you're talking about that, you know, that corner right there. Uh, you know, the traffic is something that all of us are, are dealing with. So there's a couple of things just to recognize right away, one, in the time that we've looked at this and relooked at this and tried to do things and put up the little speed signs and. The county and state roads, right? So Buella and, and Greensburg Pike present a whole, a whole other group of challenges for us in terms of how we move things forward. We have had conversations with our state representative, right, we have had conversations with the county. Right, um, some things that I've heard from folks, I can tell you, you know, I'm not on county council, I'm not in, in the state house. Uh, but I can tell you, uh, they have been shot down pretty quick. Things like trying to put speed on some state and county roads, it's not gonna happen, right? Um, but you know, I think people get the, the wrong idea of where our power lays as the borough versus where, where we lay as a state. You know, can we, somebody, there was a time about school signs, for instance, on Greensburg Pike, well, we can't just put signs up. Doesn't work that way when it's not our own, right? Um, so, and on the other hand, you know, we have had a couple different rounds where I run into, you know, and I say I, because I personally, you know. Really believe in trying to find the best ways to mitigate speeding in our community. Um, a couple of things I would, I would point out, one, I've run into some challenges because there are logistical issues with some of the common sense. Things that you would think we could just do, right? So speed bumps, speed bumps, let's talk about, you know, what snow falling looks like, right? But it's, there's all kinds, there's all kinds of issues where people like stuff, they don't like stuff. Uh, the second thing I would say, and I, and I know I said it briefly, but I, it's an important issue to me too. Uh, but they, they all are important issues, but the second thing I would say just very quickly. Um, is that in dealing with it in terms of, you know, our public safety, council has taken several steps, and this will continue to. We recognize that it's not something that is not on our radar regularly, it's how can we move things forward? How can we get, you know, even things like we, we were, you know, in our, right, looking to get more of those speed signs. Right, so we talked to Senator Costa about getting additional funding for that. So, right, it's, it's an ongoing, and you all as public, right, can really help. Right, one of the things that I think. People miss in this is coming to council is fantastic, and we love having people, and ever since we've had like Zoom in this, we've had more people again. But these are, these, you know, if it's a state road, call, call Jake, call Jake Costa, I love Jake, he's great, right? Call, call our state rep, say, I'm concerned about this, right? Call county council, say, I'm concerned about this, what can we do? Um, because those are spaces that we're doing, but it, it's also really helpful, uh, if we have that from our public as well. Uh, and as far as uh, just generally loving Churchill, absolutely, right? Like I, I, I think this, one, one of the things that makes us really special, and I'm really glad, I'm sorry for, for going so long on this. Uh, but one of the things that makes us special is that we, not only do we care, we have caring residents, no matter where you are, on kind of the spectrum of your thoughts about whatever the issue is. Uh, but we have respectful residents, right? And we've been able to navigate tricky waters where other people haven't, in a way that's been really, really respectful, so I appreciate that. And onto that, I'll give my very last comment when we move forward, next public comment from, from online, so I can't see online for some reason. Um, the, the other thing I would say is, there's been a couple of comments already about kind of questions for the candidates. I wanna make sure everyone understands the dynamic of this, because it's a little different than, than how it's been in previous years, and I'll tell you what's different. In previous years, we've always been able to have the interview process for the candidates at the workshop, right? Which is also public, by the way, and then the main vote at the business meeting, this meeting. When the, when we announced this, we gave a lot of time for the, for the candidate. We didn't have candidates, so we let it stay open a little bit longer, right? That put us up against the timeline, so we really couldn't, you know, the, the candidates have likes to live, this is not, you know, all of us, they're, they're doing their own things. So we couldn't get folks to the workshop to be able to do the interview that we normally would do at the workshop. As a result, the interview that would normally happen at the workshop is happening now kind of live in this space. It is not an interview of like the public asking questions to the candidate, this is an appointment space, right? So it's really council asking questions to the candidate. We are hearing what you're saying, and I don't think there's objection to the kind of questions that, that you guys, that you're posing as your public comment. But recognize this is not set up to be, I have a question for the candidate, this isn't to meet the candidates, this is literally. Counsel interviewing to make an appointment, right? But we have an obligation to do so in a public forum, right? So it's a matter of kind of uh sunshine, we, we don't try to, you know, sneak off and have, and have all these, have council. Have a private meeting with, with all of council, individuals certainly can meet the candidates if they choose to, right? Um, but this process really is the council's interview of the candidates before making their final decision. They've been provided the, the resumes, they have other information, uh, but that's where this is, just so everybody's clear about that. Uh, I'm going to move forward, I can't see, um, yes, absolutely, I can move online, but absolutely, please.
Hi, I'm Kate Carrigan Bill, I live at fourteen forty-one Buella Road. And it's more of a comment, uh, I work in social services, I work with juvenile probation, and I hope. Regarding short term rentals, that uh, the general theme is that we're not romanticizing it, because what happened on the north side. Was a result of social media and someone renting a place for a party, which blew up because of social media and how quickly that travels. And there are two kids dead because of that, and I, and I know. Based on what I do for a living, how often this is happening. So I just don't want it romanticized that it's a quaint, charming. Position that you're taking all the time, it's not like that, thank you.
And so I appreciate your comment, I, I would add to that, that I think that is much more in line, and I, I'm speaking out of turn, any council member, please feel free to, to correct me. Uh, but I think that is much more in line of the thought process of council in this. Um, this is not a space from the majority of council that I've talked to. Um, where people are like, hey, we really wanna kind of promote this and open this up and make it. I think this is more a, you know, how do we have some control and know what's going on in our community? Without something like this, just to be clear, there is no knowledge, no registry, no knowing who's, who has a, a. Uh, VRBOA, I don't know if that exists, okay, uh, Verbo or, or air V and B, we don't know what's going on, we don't know, and we talked about this last week. Because one of the key elements to this is really about the safety of our community, right? So if nothing else, knowing what's going on, right, knowing where it is. And you know, quite frankly, knowing for, for the owners of, of places that wanna do this, we're not trying to say you can't do this, we're not trying to ban it. Um, but we are trying to put parameters and controls so that it's done in a responsible way in which the council and which the community is able to understand what's happening. So I appreciate your comment very, very much, I'll just point that out. Um, I don't know if there's anybody else on this side? And then I, so I can't see, I can't connect my.
Yeah, we promoted, I promoted Robert Guffey.
Okay.
Mr. Guffey, if you please, why not unmute yourself and speak, you're kind of toward.
Thank you, Robert Guffey, twenty-one oh seven Suzanne Drive, and I also love Churchill. Um. I'm interested in hearing the candidate's position about repealing Borough Code three oh four dash thirty-seven point one, this is the code that allows the distribution center. Um, as a conditional use in the borough, as Kathy said, and as we all know. Um, last year, our community spent enormous amounts of time and money defending ourselves from a proposal that many of us think should never have been made to begin with. Um, I think that changing the zoning code is one of the most important things we can do now to protect our community from inappropriate development. I would like to see people on council who support that. Um, I realize that, that uh, where we are now is, is an appointment situation, as, as Mr. Dwarren said. Um, and the council will be filling the current vacancy, but I, I wanna go on record saying that in future elections, I plan to support candidates. Who are in favor of repealing that part of the Borough Code, this is sort of a deal making issue for me. Um, and I would urge my fellow voters to, to consider doing the same, thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments, sorry for my little bit of delay, I have to read it. Uh, we got a little bit of volume control, and for those of you who don't know, I have, uh, I, I am hard of hearing, so I have a difficult time. Uh, if the volume isn't up, so, uh, we all kind of suffered that one together. Um. But, but I appreciate your comment very much, is there anybody else that we are, that we have in terms of public comment?
Yes, sir.
But I always like to give an extra minute or so, because I know sometimes it can be difficult to find the button, and, and I know that personally. Um, I kick myself out of meetings accidentally, all kinds of things, so. Uh, I do give it an extra second before we move on, uh, we do have a uh special presentation next. I'm gonna just wanna give it one extra second just to make sure everybody has the opportunity to speak. Uh, looking back to the manager, anybody? No phone? Okay, that being the case, I'm going to close uh the public comment, I appreciate again everybody's public comment. And we're going to move on to a special presentation regarding the lead program.
Good evening, everybody, uh, thank you council for inviting me this evening to. Present on our lead program, which is law enforcement assisted diversion. Uh, my name is Kelly Kelly, I am the Community Engagement Manager with Connect at the University of Pittsburgh. Uh, for those of you who might not be familiar with Connect, it is a membership organization, Churchill is currently a member. And what we do is we work with about thirty-five plus municipalities that surround and pretty much border and border communities that border the city of Pittsburgh. And we work with those communities on different public policy issues, uh, things that are a concern in their communities, that they might need a little bit of help on. Um, we can come in and, and we can work with them on different policy issues that they're looking to, um. Work on their communities and hopefully connect them with other member municipalities that we have in Connect. Uh, one of the issues a few years back that a number of communities in Connect. Were concerned about was the opioid epidemic. We talked to a number of communities who were struggling with law enforcement being. Not as fully staffed as they usually are, they were being overwhelmed by a number of calls concerning people that were struggling with substance use disorder or mental health issues. So we started doing research around twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, looking at different programs that can assist our member communities in dealing with um this crisis. One of the programs that we found, and our communities really liked the idea, was called LEAD, which is law enforcement assisted diversion. And what that is, it's a pre-arrest diversion program, and it's for a very specific population in a community. It's a population that has frequently cycled in and out of the criminal legal system. Because of unmet behavioral health needs or substance use disorder, or things like poverty and homelessness. So we got our communities on board, we started subcommittees, we had a number of meetings with a number of municipalities who were interested. And we actually ended up being able to start in two co, cohorts currently, which is what we're calling them. Cause we have a number of communities that have come together in a cohort to provide this program to their communities. Our first cohort that we started was in the north, and it was with Atnam Mill Bell and Taylor. We've had them up and running since October of twenty twenty-two. And the second cohort we started was in January of this year, in twenty twenty-three, with the east cohort, with Churchill is a member of, so we have Churchill, Swissville, Braddock Hills. Uh. Wilkins Township and Shellfont, so that's where we are right now, so I thought it was kind of important to come and talk a little bit about what this program is. Inform council, those of you have, who haven't been involved in some of it, and some of um your community members that might be here tonight and might like to have some more information on it. So, um, I gave you all a little packet of information I put together about the program, you can share that out with any resident you like. I also have brochures on the program, if anybody's one day, I have a few here. Um, and the information I sent to you all, you can make copies, share it out, it's just really the basics of the program. Um, and some additional contact information if anybody has any questions. But for you all right now, I just have a little lead update, which we put together as of this month. We have um police chiefs and local elected officials from our east cohort, which was Braddock Hills, Shellfont, Churchill Forest, Hill, Swissville, Wilkins. We've been having monthly meetings since late twenty twenty-one to plan with lead. And Chief Akerly, who I think is on the call now, he's been working very closely with us and has been a great supporter, and so has Mayor Cam Rap. So, and then in July of twenty twenty-two, we have Passages to Recovery was selected to be our lead case management. Agency, and they were identified through the Department of Human Services through an RFP process. So when we divert somebody from the criminal legal system, instead of arresting them or citing them, we connect them to an intensive case management program. Which connects them with a case manager to work on whatever goals they might have at that time. And we also have a case manager supervisor who supervises that case manager and their caseload. And so we launched LEAD in the north cohort in October twenty twenty-two, and then the east cohort in twenty twenty-three. We have a large group of municipal and county officials that meet monthly, which is called a policy coordinating group. That consists of uh public defender's office, district attorney's office, county executive, probation and parole, we also have some social service agencies. Um, and our, of course, our chiefs that work with us closely. And we meet uh monthly, and we discuss things like gaps in services, um identifying funding sources, talking about how we can expand the program. Um, and right now currently, and this is sort of my ask to you all being here this evening. Um, I'm working with our east cohort members right now to plan and schedule a community info and listening session. So we would like to educate the residents of our east cohort communities about the lead program, and our students be implemented community referral, um, response initiative. So it will be, right now, we're getting our referrals from social contact referrals, is when our officers or people that work in social services. Contact, you know, one of our lead case managers and say, I have somebody who might be a good fit for the program. We're hoping to open that up to community members where all of you, you know, somebody who might be struggling or somebody that kind of fits this population. You could reach out to our case management agency and refer somebody yourself. So the um Connect's lead program is currently funded by uh Allegheny County Department of Health. And it's through a fund that they received called the Overdose to Action Grant, which was um given probably about. I think it's about five years now, and I, but I think about twenty different organizations and social service programs got funding through this. Opioid um grant, so we have funding through that, and then our case management is funded through the Department of, of Human Services. Um, and if I'm, I'll stay through the meeting and I'll be here after, if anybody has any questions, I'm happy to talk to you after. Um, my contact info is with everybody here, and I just wanted to sort of just introduce the program. Say we're really happy to be here, working with this program and with surrounding communities. And hopefully we can even expand it to more communities in this area soon too, so thank you all for your time, if anybody is in here, so I, I have some here for you.
Thank you very much for, for your, for your presentation, I don't know if council, if anybody had any questions now that, that you wanted to ask.
I, I do have a question, regarding the um, the community information section, do you have a timeline of when you'd like to see that happen?
We are working, one, we're having one in our north cohort in April, so probably April, May timeline would be great.
And then a follow-up question regarding the funding that you receive through the county, um, what is the term of that funding, how many years?
Right now, we are in our final year of funding for that, so our funding will be ending in September of this year. But we are currently right now um, working to secure more funding for a future.
Anyone else?
Yeah, you know, you talked a little bit about, I mean, you did mention Connect and what it is, and then you went into LEAD, but for everyone else that's in here, um, Connect is not just LEAD itself. There are other programs involved with, we could, talk just a.
Sure, absolutely, so um, what Connect does again, with its. We're there to assist municipalities and kind of working with them towards any kind of. Sort of systems change or policy changes they wanna make in their community, so right now we have something like the LEAD program, which is. Came out of our Public Health and Safety Working Group, we also have um a Climate Action and Infrastructure Working Group. Where another project manager that I work with, he is working with municipalities to implement climate action plans. And also talking about infrastructure improvements, we also work with uh transportation issues. Um, right now, we're doing a tech and communications subcommittee as well, where we're helping municipalities. Upgrade their um networks, so I come from a community where, you know, we don't really have much online. Or much of sort of a social media presence or an online presence or any kind of documentation's online, and a lot of communities are like that, a lot of local municipalities don't really just have the capability of doing that. So we're working with them to make sure that they have ordinances online, everything sort of electronically, that they have access to. Social media or internet or things like that, that they can work with and different, and then improving like their tech and communication, so we do all number of things. We kind of go out to municipalities and say, what do you need help with, they tell us, and we figure out how we'll help them with it. So I'm also working with the Future of Fire Group, which is a group that we're talking about how to. Regionalize volunteer fire departments in our community, so um, we're working with a number of different fire departments in a number of different municipalities. We did a needs assessment survey, we have a huge report on that, talking about what we recommend for communities to do in those situations. We're working with a number of them to sort of work together on how they could possibly work together to share either resources or equipment or things like that, so. We're kind of doing a little bit.
If we saw the need, that's a small one there.
Yeah, 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 and I can share that, I can certainly send that to you all too, it's, it's a great report, and we have about five recommendations out of that report.
And just one more time, Connect stands for Congress?
The Congress of Neighboring Communities, yes, and right now, we're located in the University of Pittsburgh. The Congress of Neighboring Communities. Yes. And right now we're located in the University of Pittsburgh, out of the Graduate School of Public and International. Thank you.
Thank you again. Really appreciate it. Good.
I was just gonna, sorry, I was just gonna say, no, I I appreciate you taking the time to be here. I think I remember it's probably about a year ago. When council voted, you know, to to start looking into this and it was brought up by, you know, Chief Ron and Mayor Paul and they said, hey. This, you know, this is a program we think is is a good thing and, you know, why we should all get involved in it. And I remember that vote. You know, I lost my cousin to an overdose and. You know, it hits close to home, but I I hope that, you know, with programs like this, that we're we're able to better serve, you know, vulnerable folks in our communities and and just do a better job. So I'm excited to see if this is coming.
Yeah, thank you so much. We've had, I didn't mention, but we've had a lot of success so far. And especially with this population, it's a very difficult population. It's a population that has been really kind of ignored or. Not helped very much by the services that have been out there or things that have been tried with them so far. They feel traumatized and it's they're they're difficult to kind of reach and work with. We've been really successful with our case managers and working with this population. We've had. From the two cohorts, we've had sixty-four referrals. So far and fourteen participants, and that's active participants. And for this population, that's. Amazing. Our case managers have overdosed, have reversed one overdose. We've also connected another participant with. Medical staff and that she needs to to be in touch with in order to get. Much needed medical care. So it's. It's been really wonderful to see. I too am somebody with lived experience. So. You know, my husband's in recovery and so it's it's really wonderful to. To see everybody kind of come together to to help this population. And it's been really great to see our case managers sort of building those relationships and having those connections with them. So. I'm excited. I'm excited to see where it goes from here.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you again. I said information and something to follow up on course. So we're gonna move forward. We've got a still healthy agenda in front of us. So trying to keep ourselves going here. And this moves us into. The vacant vacancy and potentially the vacancy, as council is aware. We had opened this up after the resignation of adult. There is an obligation in terms of statutory that that we either fill this within the third day period or it would move the vacancy committee. As such, as I was trying to explain before. We left it open until March second in in a hope to. Receive some candidates. We have received two and Andrea Castillo, if I mispronounce names, please just smack it in the face later. We'll do it now. And Cheryl Fuller. We have their resumes. We've had an African review them. I think council already, you know, I don't know if people individually have spoken to folks or not. But at this time, I think the way that this is normally worked in the past, and this is. This is an aberration because of this timeframe of doing this at at the at the business meeting. Because normally kind of pre-COVID, which was the last time that we, and I'm saying this for for everyone's benefit. Normally during pre-COVID. People never came to the to the business meeting. And so we would be over there in like the conference room. And it really would just be the candidates and we would say, even though it's a public meeting. You know, out of consideration for the other candidates, if you if you'd be willing to to exit the room. So that we can have kind of a private interview with each person. Because of the the timeframe in this and because of, you know, the Zoom and the rest of the space, it's just not going to work that way. So it is, you know, to me, it's not the most comfortable space for me. And so I apologize to the candidates because. Then I don't write the the borough code. If I did, it wouldn't work quite like this. It'd probably be better here and worse in other places. But nonetheless, so what we are going to do. I, you know, is just have each candidate come. I think it is fair. I would ask, and you know, I don't know how the candidates feel. I'm fine with everyone kind of being in the room. It's on Zoom. It's public. If you guys are comfortable with that, I'm I'm okay with that. I don't really care if I'll take a volunteer if somebody wants to come first. You know, it's up to you all. If not, I will flip a coin. And then I will leave it to to council to ask whatever questions that they may have for you. After the first candidate is is questioned. The second candidate, we will do the same thing. After that. I I will give, you know, council a couple of seconds, but the way that this is framed now, we pretty much move into vote. Yeah, now again, not the way that I would plan this if I if I had written a code. So what we will do is following the the vote, then we will know who the appointed candidate is. We will move through the rest of the agenda. And then I think following that, we will have the kind of swearing of the candidate so they can sit at at the table moving forward and do work with committees. Am I missing anything? It was the manager, Mr. Solicitor, because it's a. It's a weird lift for me in this particular space.
Yeah, the only thing I the only thing I know, the way it's currently set up, there are a few motions between the interviews and the actual appointment, maybe to give councils and.
Yeah, so deliberation.
Think about that in their own minds and then. And then get back for number seven will be the resolution.
Thank you for pointing it out for me. As I say, that's that's why I don't write the codes or or too much else sometimes. So thank you. Thank you for that. That being the case, do I have a volunteer? Would you, before I flip a coin?
Thank you, everyone.
Sorry? Come, come on up. The price is right. Okay, so council, I will turn it. I think I'll give you kind of opening if you like. I'll do for both. And then we will turn it over to council for questions.
Fantastic. Hello, everyone. My name is Andrew D'Attilo. I've been a Churchill resident for over fifteen years. I live at twenty-five ten Creekhead Drive. Very excited to be here and happy to answer a question now.
Folks, people have questions. I turn it. I turn it over to to council for questioning.
I had the opportunity to speak to both candidates and so I I don't think I need to have any more information than I already have. So. I I'll ask you a question. I've been in council for a year, so I'm not really a newbie anymore, but you know, so I wouldn't say I'm a newbie wedding, but. We work as a group and, you know, it's it's. It's seven of us and I'm just curious, maybe you could give me some examples of any like group decisions you had to make. I'm very impressed by your resume, by the way. Any group decisions you have to make? Or you had to make are being involved with. Groups and and how you made these decisions and how the experience could be utilized. In a council setting.
Perfect. Yes. So. What I've done for many, many years, you can see by my resume, is I've done sales, I've done management, I've done clinical, it's called clinical experience. So everything that we do in the hospitals especially is a group decision. So one doctor might like my product. Another clinician might not. That committee might not like my product. UPMC themselves might not want to spend the money on my product. What I have to do is end up working all these angles. So get the clinicians buy-in, get the staff's buy-in. Get my company to get on board with what UPMC wants to do, meet in the middle. So everything that I do is based in groups. Even though I'm not a child, but I I do work all of us.
Thank you. Appreciate that. So as a resident of Churchill for fifteen years, can you speak to what the motivation is for wanting to join council now?
Absolutely. You know, I've been here for fifteen years. I also love Churchill. I wouldn't be here. Over the years, due to some fantastic neighbors, I've gotten more and more involved in my community. And I've seen what we can do when we work together. And being able to see and help this community grow and bring my experiences and my listening ability and be able to work with everybody. I really believe that this is a perfect time for somebody like me, who's lived here long enough, who understands the area, to really come in and take the lead and help.
What gaps have you witnessed from, I guess you watch the council meetings, correct?
Yes.
Consistently. So have you noticed any gaps in council that you feel that your expertise? Would be applicable to move our agenda forward with making Churchill better for the community?
I think that overall, we have a great council. And the way you all work together should be mimicked everywhere around the country because this is a great group. I think that with anything, it's hard because you hear your neighbors, you hear, you know, what they have to say and what we have to say and your neighbor too. And then you have to come and look at the actual laws, what can we do, how can we move this forward? I think that being able to have a fresh set of eyes on things is good. I think being able to listen and work with all of you is good. I think that my extensive. Career, all I do is contracts and and really get into nitty gritty and find and figure out ways to make things work. So I think that bringing that expertise and the ability to work with everyone, I really think that we can drive everything forward.
You mentioned it here. I was looking at your resume. As a resident of Blackridge, you volunteered on many community events. Can you just give me one or two?
Certainly. There's, there's a lot, but recently I have, what was the gingerbread house baking, which is so much fun at the BCA. I'm also the person who actually cuts the grass at at the park down there. So I saw a need. And with the help of another neighbor who let me a tractor for many years. Went down and just took over and started cutting it just for, because it needed done. And I want that space to be used. I'll also do your lawn.
So what would you, what would you say your two biggest strengths are and how will you leverage them for Churchill?
Listening, number one. And with listening, being able to formulate a plan. So. I think the biggest thing that most people do in a, you have an idea, right? You're so gung ho about this idea. I'm going to sell this or I'm going to move this thing here. But we forget to listen to everything else. And I think one of the most important things anybody can do is sit there and listen. And then formulate, because sometimes my opinion's been changed. And and I think that's important, being able to say that, oh, wow, that's that's a better idea. I like that. Or let's. Take this part and this part and make it even better. So I think that would really come to play. I'm also a go-getter. I can't sit still. I love I love to be out and I love to help. So that's just who I am.
Thank you.
In terms of the different committees that. Council members serve on, are there any committees that comes to mind that are of interest?
Sure. Looking at what these do, I'm trying to get where I would sit best in. So I I think obviously communication, because I have to do that in my my daily life. That would be fantastic. I also think that even though it'd be very difficult, infrastructure, the more I thought about it and how difficult it would be. I I love that kind of thing. I love to learn and really put my minds together and make something better.
One kind of question now, are we done? In terms of policy, is there any policy that you would like to introduce? Or do you think that you would like to investigate?
For age come Sundays? No. That's part of policy. Thank you. Good. No, honestly, I think that. So really, I'd have to sit down and look at it word for word. Again, this is my contract coming through. I need to see exactly how things are written because things. You can hear what something is, but it really isn't exactly that. So I really want to make sure that I have a full understanding before I would come to make a suggestion.
One more. I know you obviously have a full-time job. And being on council, it is really a lot of work. And do you have any concerns how you're going to fit this all in? Because even when I started, I knew it was a lot of work. I didn't realize how much more it was. And I'm, you know, it's a good learning process and that's great and I'm happy to do it, but. It is, it it can be very time consuming. Do you have any concerns with that at all, you know, with your work juggling, everything?
No, I'm I'm fortunate that I live by myself. I have great neighbors helping with my dog. So I I'm I'm home and I have the ability to do that and also to go do work from home too. So there are days I can work from home and adjust my schedule. So I'm not worried about that at all.
Any other?
You know, for comment question?
You you can, Mr. Mayor.
But my first comment was, and. That kind of kind of hit the hit the nail on the head. My question was, or my question for comment is. There's a lot of reading that has to go along with this job. The meetings, the community meetings they have that do consume a lot of time. For example. Our last binder contained almost eight hundred pages. Of material for us to kind of go through for to prepare for any meetings. And it's not just the. You know, the Monday night meeting and the first Monday and the second. There's a lot of in-between stuff, though, like, and you kind of answered the question of, you know, you. You had that availability to be at home and and, you know. You know, arrange your schedule to meet the needs. The other thing, and my comment, and you you talked about this too, I'm very big on volunteerism. And, you know, I I do a lot of volunteering in the in the borough myself and try to pull other people in. And and I heard what you said about cutting the grass and being involved on the BCA. And hoping that you'd be willing to help me and pull others in so we can grow our programs of doing the volunteer work throughout the borough.
I'd love to.
Do I hear any other questions? I'd like to know if not. I thank you for.
Thank you.
Willingness to serve. And I would ask this for our policy chief.
Hi, good evening. My name is Shirley Graham Fuller. I am a resident of Churchill for three years. I reside at one forty-nine Thornberry Drive. My husband and I love Churchill. Our first week here, it was like we were on vacation. It was so quiet and I loved it. And so this is an opportunity for me to come and stand before you who have my resume. So I'm hoping to take any questions.
So I will do the same and see if individuals have questions.
Okay, sure. I'll ask you a question. Give me a few qualities you think a council person should have. Off the top of your head.
Being able to listen. And knowing when to speak. So that when you speak, you're reflecting what you've heard. From everyone. On the council, from everyone that's around you. What you've studied, what you've learned and what the residents have had to say. And you bring it all to the table before you make a comment. So that we're all part of one team and something is said and something is spoken, something is disagreed upon. That at the end of the day, we can all make decisions. From what we have heard.
Can I ask you what I asked Andrea about giving some examples of? Any, whether it's in your job or any volunteer work you did where you had to make group. Decision-making, because as I said, you know, we come together as a group to make decisions. And maybe if you can give me an example of that?
For the past ten years, I was the Executive Director of the Home of Concerned Citizens Council. Where we worked with residents, we worked with our elected officials. We worked with other community organizations around community engagement and community development. I enjoyed working with the residents, but I also enjoyed working with our politicians. Because it gave me the opportunity to be able to sit on that side, to sit on the resident's side. And come together with the politicians, but what was best for the resident. But most importantly, what was best for the community at large. And so as the Executive Director. I had volunteers and employees that worked under me. And even though we had to make decisions within the community that was not for everyone. We thought that when we made decisions, it was for the best of everyone, all of the residents. And so it's working with a group of people. To make decisions that people may not like it sometimes, for making decisions. And as the Executive Director. Being able to go out and go to the mayor's office or go to councilman, you know, Burgess or whoever's office we were working with at that time, it was state representative bagging. And going and hearing what they had to say and then bringing it back to the community. As the person that would go. And I remember at one occasion it was, they didn't want everybody coming down at one time in the spring and the hollering and the. Politicians don't like that, but it was being able to take it back to the community and take back to the residents. And so that's the part that I enjoyed working as a team. With officials and with residents. And sometimes it can be difficult because when decisions are made, a lot of times. What's said at the table can't be brought back unless you assure what you're bringing. And so that's what I would say. Making sure that people on our team, we work with confidentiality. Because a lot of what we were told, you know, behind closed doors, we just can't go run with that. Sometimes we have to hold what we have until we get the full picture. And one of the problems that we did have was working with the annual rescue. At that time, fifteen million dollar project in home, when I was a part of that, as speaking on behalf of the residents. And so that team effort. Was one of the efforts that was, you know, we were able to do that within the community.
So similar, what are your two biggest strengths and how will you leverage them for Churchill?
My two biggest strengths. I would say one is being bold. Going where someone else would not go, but I'll go. And that to me is a strength. Currently, I. Work with senior citizens in the East End. I've heard that in a long time. Working with senior citizens. And so to me, it's a strength, compassion. And have an empathy. And those two things are things that we have to have because emotions sometime, particularly during during and after COVID. Those were emotions that were out of hand. And I also bring, I believe, to the table the opportunity to have. to be able to research things. To look, you know, before I even speak on things, it's what, what do I have before me? What do I have to work with? And then being able to bring that. So I think having that boldness and, you know, somebody says, well, who wants to go and do that? Who wants to do this? I'll do it. Because I believe we have, there has to be a balance. And when we have that good balance, when we learn what, what assets we all bring to the table, then what can we get done together collectively? And that's one of the strengths that I believe I have, so.
So I, I had a question. Um, what is the motivation for my concern on, on council now?
Now, I miss working with, and I, I, when I worked, lived in the East End, I love being able to go outside and do something, go outside and go to the library, go outside and work, walk around my community and see different things. Though I'm moving to Churchill, I see so many things that, you know, like up and down our street, we have to be careful when we step off of the grass with the lawnmower, because party is going uphill, and we have to back up because school buses go so fast down the street. And so I says, why, why are these buses flying down the street like this? And I met one of the women up on our street, and she said that they had, at one time, the school buses, if they weren't picking up children, they had to go the way the bus was going instead of going through the main street. And so I said, then that's a problem. And so I wanted to be able to, I said, maybe I need to be on council, because I see so many things. I see so many opportunities in Churchill. And I believe that being part of council, I can help get some of those things done and working with the community.
I'm curious, you're, you're relatively new to Churchill. What, what was the attraction? Why, why did you decide to move here?
Why did I decide to move here?
Yeah.
It's quiet. No, no, I don't. Why did you decide to move here? It's quiet. And my husband and I, um, we're looking in the area. We love the East End. We love being in this part. And so when we saw our house, I won't, maybe we saw the pictures posted, pictures of, we get an opportunity, I'd love you to see them. It wasn't, my husband wasn't, no, 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 that's not gonna happen. I says, but hon, look at the community at large. Don't just look at the house. I said, the house is durable, but look at the community at large. And what I saw was beautiful tree-lined streets, quietness, people cutting their grass, which is something you don't sort of get within, within the inner city, I call it. And so that's what made me like Churchill. I love Churchill because of the accessibility to the parkway, to the mall. You know, those sort of things, it's what made me attracted to Churchill. And then we're right here where everything is. And I love my street. I love my community, and I am part of Churchill. And so I want to reach out and do a little bit more than what we're currently doing.
Committees of interest?
Infrastructure, this one. Public safety and communication.
Um, a policy that you would like to see introduced or that you would like to lead? Trying to be fair with the question.
No, no. So policies, I would, I would have to see exactly what's in place now. I don't believe you run and changing anything before you see what's going on and why it was proposed that way in the first place. So I have to read, again, it will take some reading. I heard someone say how many pages there were. It would be being able to see what policies are in place, what policies need to be in place to enhance the policies that are already there. And then how we work together as a council and as a community before making any changes or putting in policy.
Any other questions from, from council? And to your point, I appreciate you saying you're trying to prepare questions, I was trying to mark them off as we were going along to make sure that, that everyone's at least asked the, the same questions. I really do appreciate that. Um, I think the one, the one question that was asked that I did not hear an answer to, just in terms of fairness to the responses for everything, uh, was simply that the time consideration, there was a question asked about, it was a lot, it takes a lot of time, you know, and, you know, what you're feeling on that. I think it's the only question that I see, so I'll just stop that otherwise I wouldn't ask any questions that have chance talking, even I appreciate it, aren't I?
I am blessed to be retired from the fortory. And, um, we're getting away from my age, or here goes my age, but I'm getting away from my age. My husband and I are blessed to be retired. But I do work within our church and community outreach and working with seniors and working with the homeless. And so I work at home. And that part I do, I enjoy being able to work at home, so no problem to walk down the road or walk to someone's house to get something done or have, you know, if people could just come over and we could meet at home to get things done or have meetings if I'm on certain committees. And so I have been truly blessed to be retired and able to give time, have enough time to do that and go to school, because I have back in school going for my bachelor's in psychology, so I'm a woman.
Congratulations on that.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council?
I'll just make a comment, uh, um, you know, looking at Ms. Blair Fuller's resume, she has extensive history with serving the community and leading in the community. Um, and dealing with complex issues and making sure that all sides are fairly represented and providing a voice for the community and moving the community forward. And so I thank both of you for your willingness to serve. Uh, this is not an easy process to come and do an interview with, you know, members of council, be on Zoom and answer questions rapidly, but you all both did, um, very well. I just thank you for your time and your interest. And thank you for your commitment to serving the community and even going back to school is, is a major career. Um, because you can always be in life, long learner, so.
Followed it if there is not additional questions. Um, one, again, thank you both. This, this is a difficult process. Uh, both the actual process, um, this is not, as I said before, this is not how I would design this. Um, but also, I think it's a difficult process because you guys are both, you know, outstanding candidates. Uh, to that end, I would also point out that whomever is not selected, um, there are other abilities to serve here in Churchill. There are committees that need space. There are other ways that you can volunteer, so I would ask that, you know, to consider that, uh, if you are not appointed. Um, and then of course, the last thing that I will say on, on my behalf on this, um, is I feel fortunate in the sense of, of the job of council president is basically herding cats. And I, I feel like whichever one of you is selected by council, it will make my life easier and not harder. Um, and so I, I really do appreciate that of both you and having the chance to speak with both you, uh, directly. So, um, that being the case, uh, I'm going to close for a second. We'll move forward. As you know, it's, it's an agenda item in terms of as a vote. Uh, so I'll ask council, as much as you can, as we try to move our way forwards, consider what both the candidates have provided to us in terms of their information, uh, prior to making your final decision, uh, upon the vote. Uh, that being the case, we're going to go through a few ordinary items before we move into that vote. Uh, and that begins with, uh, number three.
We're moving now, alright. Okay. Mr. President, uh, I move to accept the meeting minutes for the Monday, February sixth, twenty twenty-three, for a council workshop meeting and Monday, February thirteen, twenty twenty-three, regular council meeting.
Second? Thank you. Any discussion of minutes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Told. And the meetings, the meeting minutes are accepted without opposition. Uh, moving on to the mayor's report. Mr. Mayor, if you'd like to give a, no, before you move it.
Chief Ronald actually has reported to me that there were no critical or significant incidents during the month of February twenty twenty-three. Our officers handled a total of one thousand one hundred and five events, starting off the New Year, or, or I'm sorry, of both calls and services, proactive patrol engagements and details, resulting in nine arrests. The department's police vehicles logged a total of three thousand eight hundred thirty-four miles this month. That was one thousand eight hundred forty-four less than the last, last month. And the total to date is nine thousand five hundred twelve. The two thousand seventeen Ford Interceptor SUV number seven is temporarily out of service, and the two thousand seventeen Ford Interceptor SUV number ten is permanently out of service, which may contribute to less mileage, because fewer cars. Steve Ronald actually has reported the total amount of magisterial fines collected for the month of February twenty-three was nine hundred seventy-eight dollars and two cents. Total for the year is one thousand eight hundred ninety-seven dollars and six cents. The ticket summary for the month of February twenty twenty-three was twenty-six, zero non-traffic tickets, six parking and twenty traffic tickets. On Monday, February sixth, two thousand twenty-three, our local area tragically experienced yet another line-of-duty death of a police officer. When Officer Sean, Sean Silgowski of the McKeesport Police Department was shot and killed while attempting to apprehend a violent individual who was suffering from a mental health crisis. McKeesport Officer Charles Promis was also shot, but survived the deadly encounter. Both officers are work familiar to our department and even friends of several of our officers, including the chief. Since that incident, several other police, police officers across the country have been also shot in the line of duty, giving the ultimate sacrifice. According to the chief and others, our society is becoming increasingly violent. Police officers are more at risk than any other time in our history. The chief asked our residents to please keep the men and women of law enforcement, community, in their thoughts and prayers, not just during these violent times, but always. I received a message from a gentleman whose parents were involved in an automobile accident in our borough, in which both were taken to the hospital. He was, he gave high praise for the, what a professionalism and compassion of Officer Livy Sage. Details and other related statistics concerning the police department during the month of February twenty twenty-three are reported on the attached police department reports. And that was the accident down on Buell Road at Homer, the place.
Thank you, thank you. Uh, this time I didn't attempt to accept the mayor's report.
Second?
Second, thank you. Is there any discussion on the report? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Told. And the mayor's report is accepted without opposition. Moving on to the treasures report and the paying of the bills.
Alright, I'm sorry. Um, I, Mr. President, I would like to make a motion to accept the treasure report for February twenty eighth of twenty twenty-three. Um, the bank statement balances as of January thirty-first of twenty twenty-two was two million five hundred fifty-seven thousand eight hundred ninety-three dollars in thirty-six cents. And then as of February twenty-eighth of twenty twenty-three, the balance was two million two hundred and twenty-four thousand six hundred eighteen dollars and fifteen cents, a difference of three hundred and thirty-three thousand two hundred and seventy-five dollars and twenty-one cents.
And if you don't mind, would you want to combine that with the motion to pay the bills?
Um, I'd also like to make a motion directing the finance officer to pay the bills for the borough of Churchill or Tuesday, since February thirteenth of twenty twenty-three.
Don't have to read, you don't have to read through that, no problem. You've done a, a Yeoman's, uh, well, I'm just reading that for sure. Uh, thank you. Uh, is there any discussion? As a matter of discussion point, the, the next round, any bill over the amount of fifteen thousand dollars, we try to read publicly as a large expenditure. Um, in this case, we've kind of lowered that a little bit more, because, uh, our borough, our borough manager is great to try and put as much as we can. Uh, and so here, we have five that are listed in front of you. Uh, they include Gateway Engineers, the amount of thirty-eight thousand seven hundred and seventy-one dollars and thirty-five cents. Uh, Elka San, uh, the amount of thirty-seven thousand two hundred and twenty-one dollars and sixteen cents. Uh, Big Leoty Landscaping Construction, our, our business roadwork, the amount of twenty-one thousand two hundred and twenty-one dollars and eighty-six cents. Uh, the tax fund, uh, with, with Westinghouse Electric Company, uh, LLC, in the amount of thirteen thousand thirty-three dollars and forty-four cents. And our health plan, uh, for UPMC, the amount of ten thousand eighty, eight hundred and eighty-one dollars and eighty-six cents. Uh, is there any discussion on either the treasures report or the paying of the bills? Does test how quick I can read those numbers up. Alright, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Told. And it does pass without opposition. This moves us on to number seven. And I think when we, when we're talking about the appointing of, of a person to fill, it's not something we can just make a motion. Uh, it does require a kind of a vote of, of vote for an individual motion. Uh, first, um, what I would say is rather than have one individual kind of just throw a motion out, um, I think it's worthwhile and the public kind of deserves to know kind of where individuals stand. I can't afford you to do that, so we can make a motion and we can just move forward with the single motion. Um, I would also open the floor and kind of suspend rubber tools for the purposes of, of open debate. If people wanted to have open discussion on the matter, uh, I have no problem with, with doing it that way. Uh, that being the case, I, I would turn it over. If people want to have a conversation about two particular candidates, we can do so. Uh, if we want to take a strong, you know, strong form, which emotion, you can do so, I can do that expression, starting with kind of an open conversation.
I like some time. Yeah. Um, I just would like to say, you know, sort of like when it rains, of course. Um, I am just so proud to live in this community and the quality and caliber of people that we have, you know, who stepped forward is, is really remarkable. Either one of these candidates would serve, uh, our council well. Um, they, they both have tremendous giving hearts and skills to bring to the table and so on. It's very difficult. It's very difficult in this setting. It's, it's very difficult in terms of, of looking at each of these candidates. Having done that and, and having been on the council as long as I have, knowing what is probably coming in terms of, um, the needs of the borough, the directions the committees are going on, the prospect of development. We don't know what yet, but, but development on this major parcel of our land and so on. Uh, I believe that Andrea's skills and experience, her contract negotiating experience, her finance experience, uh, those particular skills, I think, are going to be needed on this council. And, um, so I'm, I'm supporting Andrea's nomination.
Thank you. Other comments? We'll, we'll look to the table, because we just want to pull forward. Anybody else?
Um, I would like to say that Ms. Blair Fuller also has experience with, I'm dealing with development. She just mentioned of the two million dollar development in the community, um, that she was a part of. I think that she has extensive experience, you know, serving a community and advocating and moving communities forward. And I don't think that a length of time, uh, being a resident determines what you can do for a community, not saying anyone is saying that. Um, someone who's lived here for longer than three years has, you know, more to contribute. I just believe that she is a new resident. She's excited about being a community and making a difference. She has experience serving in capacities similar to what she would be serving in if we were to appoint her to council. And so I will be supporting Ms. Blair Fuller.
Thank you. Other positions? I, I will try and build as much time for you as I can.
Yeah. Okay. Um, can we take a recess? No, I, 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 I will. This is very difficult. Um, I really think you both are terrific and, and to Jay's point, whoever doesn't get it, um, please work with us. And there's so many other things I think you can do. Um, and this is tough, and I looked at your resumes for days and thrilled to meet both of you. Um, I am just slightly leaning toward Andrea because of your, your, your sales background and, and, I don't know, there was just something there, the marketing and, um, again, very difficult, but I, I think I'm going to have to go with Andrea.
Come with in your own, would you like to come up first?
No, I, I, I think, uh, just to echo everyone in the room, it's, it's a very difficult decision. You know, we're, we're blessed that we have such, uh, fine folks, you know, that, uh, would want to come out and, um, you know, serve the community, so. Appreciate, uh, you know, both. Uh, I think, I think I'm also leaning, uh, you know, in similar direction, just, uh, based on a couple of the, the things.
That being, sorry, I'm pretty good.
Toward, toward Andrea.
I'm a big usual and call it ours it is. Um, so that, I suppose that leaves me, uh, in this space. And one of the things about, um,
Is that, excuse me, is that on the other? No.
No, Valerie's not on the, I would not, trust me. Getting, getting access from, from where she is is, is a bit challenging.
I try.
So, so let me, let me say this. One, one of the, uh, privileges of, of sitting in this seat is I get to go laugh. Uh, and that makes the, the difficult decisions. And that makes the the difficult decisions in some ways easier and some ways harder. You know, the thing that that I know for both of you is your commitment to this community. You know, to to be quite frank, purely, I I I've worked with her in the past, right? We we have, and she is, she has been excellent. Years ago, on I think called the firmly further fair housing task force or the city of Pittsburgh, when I was working in the fair housing space. I have very little doubt on either candidate's capacity to build the role. So I I I don't think that is the the factors in this. Now, you know, I will say that I I already know in this in this conversation that there's a majority meeting one way, so that kind of fills fills that space. You know. But I want everyone to know, right, that even in understanding that, both candidates would have been fantastic on this council. And they still might be, right? You know, this this is, you know, I know people are committed to wanting to work for this council and I appreciate that. And there will be additional opportunities in that space. Hearing the the will of the majority of council and quite frankly, myself, I probably leaned a little bit towards Andrea. Prior and not because of any qualification skill or or issue in that matter. If you want to know, you know, my driving factor, and this is probably sound stupid, and so feel free to beat me up later for it. But I thought about the idea of the individual who was new in our own community, and this is maybe unfair to to Shirley because she hasn't been here as long. To have the opportunity to go cut other people's grass, right, to go do things in other people's areas. You know, and I know that that surely has donated her time and energy in other communities without question, like there's no. This is not a space that I can be like, oh, yeah, this is, you know, it's it's just not. So I would I would hope that there would still be consideration for other opportunities. There there still are. But I think with that, I will bring this to a close, entertain a motion and and move ourselves forward.
Mr. President, I nominate Andrea DeTelly to take the seat that was designated by by Adam McDowell. And to complete his term, which would be till December twenty twenty-three.
And you also moved to adopt a resolution to that effect.
Yes, and and adopt the resolution to that effect. Thank you, Councilor.
Resolution forty-five sixty, would that be the resolution?
Can I do whatever?
I think that's.
No, I think we're good.
Forty-five sixty.
I'll just put it all in pieces together.
Yeah.
I I would I would second that. Oh, we're, it's a difficult spot for candidates, a difficult spot to do this in this kind of form, so I understand. All right, the second, any discussion on the matter? I mean, have just opened the discussion into the suspension.
Yeah, I mean, just just like you said, Jay, this is a difficult decision, you know, unfortunately, we can't, we can't have to, we can't add too more to our goals. I'd love to, but we have to make a decision and we have to move forward, so it's tough and we appreciate it.
Any other discussion?
Can I speak in my motion?
It's still open.
Okay, all right. I was very, very impressed with your interest in the school district. And I think that we have, you know, not at this point of formal relationship, we have, but they did whatever this in our conversation. At one point, there was a consortium of municipalities that we had participated in forming. That has gone kaput. So I would love to speak with you about your involvement in that arena, the the school district and and. I'm quite sincere about that. I worked for what, six years trying to get something happening there. So I was very impressed with our conversation on that on that issue particularly. So if I may, I will be in touch with you and talk with you about that.
You, I'll be honest, is there other discussion?
I just would like to say, if you still have interest in serving on council, there are seats that are up for reelection. I know that the petition process. You were supposed to turn your petition on Tuesday, but there is a nomination papers process that will allow you to get on the ballot in November. And so I encourage you to run and allow the community to express their votes.
You noted that was my kind of point before without being quite as over in the space of electoral politics, I kind of. Set down, but I appreciate that comment. If there is any other discussion? If not, I'm going to ask if this is a roll call for the purpose of the record.
Very good. Councilmember, I've got C D Klein.
To to your name.
Councilmember Magastina?
Yes.
Councilmember Diane Law?
Yes.
Councilmember Shepherd Williams?
Yeah.
And President J Dorn?
Yes.
Thank you. The the roll call would be my four one.
Thank you. Motion carries. Congratulations and thank you again. And I I echo. Miss Law's comments of vote, and I know you already, like, I'm not surprised that you're impacted, right? Like, we've we've had it in this space, so I hope that you will continue. We're going to move forward. We have a few things that need to get going on here.
Okay, Mr. President, I read the we adopt resolution number four, five, six, one of the Borough of Churchill County, Allegheny, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. Declaring the borough's intent to follow the schedules and procedures for disposition of records as outlined in the Pennsylvania Municipal Records Manual. Approved on December sixteen, twenty oh eight, as amended and the guidance for the form of permanent recreation, recreation. Of municipalities approved on March twenty-eighth, twenty nineteen, as amended.
Thank you. Second, oh, that seemed easy compared to what you had. Having said that, as a matter of discussion, this really is a question of bringing us in line with kind of best practices. This isn't. So a new space is really about making sure that we have all the votes of us with it. We're having record keeper. Other other discussion though? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed. And motion carries without opposition. Moving on to number nine.
Mr. President, I move we adopt resolution four, five, six, two of the Borough of Churchill, County of Allegheny. Commonwealth of Pennsylvania to participate in the local government academy technical assistance program, community financial health assessment.
Thank you. Second, thank you. I think it reads relatively self-explanatory for folks. You know, I think it's a good space for us to be in. I don't know if you've had additional comments to it. Alex?
I just simply that this is a great opportunity to continue our work with the local government academy and take advantage of this offering to help us with them. Some short range as well as long range financial planning, what we hope to do from this is bring board into the states initiative as well. And by doing both of those, you know, to not only have a good, sound financial plan in the short term and in the long term. But make us eligible for other funding opportunities to support the program goals that we'll achieve through the planning process.
Thank you. Other discussion? I would just say I continue to be impressed by our staff, diligent of work. I am with our committees, I'm sorry.
I take that that they they have not, there is a, you know, there is a could be, but it just depends on how many of us go after it.
Was that you repeat the the question?
The question was, is there a cost? Sorry.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So both L J programs, state program, use the language of fifty percent up to, but they also use language like. It is reduced or eliminated depending on the, we will ask. But when we move forward with that side of it, if there is a cost, we'll be sure that council gets to see what that looks like. We just don't know, I don't know how we can, so many people came up on the offer, but they not be. And that's a good question.
Liz, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed. And motion passed without opposition. Moving to the committee's on to the next show.
Mr. President, I would motion to award the Churchill Borough in twenty twenty-three sewer repair contracts, contract A. Sanitary and storm sewer point repairs to the low bidder Soli Construction in the amount of one hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars, eight hundred, or one hundred and sixty-seven thousand, eight hundred and eighty dollars. And just note on that, the quantities and type of work to be performed, you know, were bid as individual items and that may be adjusted throughout the contract life.
Thank you. Do you second the motion?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on the matter?
So just as we talked about last week, this is our ongoing repairs to meet our consent decree needs, you know, and and then also stormwater issues. And Soli Construction was the apparent low bidder, you know, qualified low bidder. They have previously held a contract and done good work for the borough.
Thank you.
Anything else to add, Mr. Engineer?
Oh, thanks. I I believe have held this contract for the last six years or more for the borough and great work. Been satisfied with the work.
Yeah, they've they've always been, you know, when we do get those emergency repairs, they're always quick to to be on site and get things taken care of, you know, quickly, so.
Any other discussion on the matter? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed. And most fast without opposition. Moving on to number eleven.
Mr. President, I would motion to award the Churchill Borough twenty twenty-three sewer repair contracts, contract P. Sanitary and storm sewer manhole to manhole lining contracts to the apparent low bidder Jet Jack Incorporated in the amount of one hundred and fifty-eight thousand, two hundred dollars.
Thank you. Any, thank you. Any discussion on the matter?
I I have a question. What is consent decree without the sand to address our sanitary sewer systems? Is there an end? Like, are we?
It's actually a question I I I I chuckle because the question is is one that I think is asked throughout the council. I I, you know, I'm going to defer to to a borough engineer to to weigh in. On the space of the consent decree's impact on local municipalities and the ongoing status.
I love the question, but.
That is a very good question. One, that we do get asked a lot. Essentially, for this work in particular, it is for operation and maintenance of your sewer system. So that is in itself required to make sure that your system is running fully unless you were to. Do something to totally replace your entire sewer system, which most likely do not happen. So operation maintenance aspect is continuous and more of a yearly effort. We have seen the number of repairs and required repairs that are that have been completed go down over the year. As the entire system has been evaluated to date and necessary repairs been completed. At this time, the borough does still have a backlog of repairs to complete. And typically, these contracts are utilized in order to continue to pick away at those, as well as we've seen emergency repairs come up throughout the years. And so that that is why we typically work with the infrastructure committee and staff to go through repairs, defects as they come up or as they're identified. They go hand in hand with the CCTV inspection work that's completed. And on a annual basis, approximately ten percent of the system is evaluated based on those CCTV repairs. So essentially, all sewers should be televised once every ten years. Over that time, you see changes with tree line community, there's a lot of roots which make their way into the sewers and cause defects. So do it these overall, the consent order, that's a separate, and I don't want to go too much further. There's a whole nother aspect to that. The current consent order that you're under is set to run through twenty twenty-seven currently, but it is set to reestablish it though.
Not to make the meeting run longer, can I just give a high view as well? Just two things, one, the borough's less than a hundred years old, it's it's going to have its ninety-third day soon next year. And what that means is most of the houses that we've seen built have been built really within the last fifty, sixty, seventy years under growing infrastructure like sanitary. And storm sewers don't have much longer than an expected life. So really, the borough for the first thirty years, forty years of existence has been playing for coming online. District wouldn't have been on the borough's radar to repair or replace lines with tree roots breaking the lines. But but globally also, the Clean Water Act and so many other federal and state laws, which we all support because we think. That's something we should have clean water and cool water ways. Just just requires such a different approach to these kinds of issues than what our foremothers and forebodders have to deal with in dealing in communities. So we we, as you can see with Alkasan investing in the large tunnel project in the tens of millions of dollars. And all the other communities that are investing hundreds of millions of dollars on top of that, probably answers never, right? Because by the time we get a bunch of pipes fixed, the other ones have reached their, you know, end of their lifespan and they'll need to be repaired. We won't have a consent decree maybe to to run under, but we'll just be our good stewardship of our resources and infrastructure.
The other thing I'd add is it's it's likely that the, you know, the DEP and and the environmental, you know, EPA and all these agencies that have kind of jurisdiction over this stuff will. Continue to have, you know, some type of role even in the future if we, you know, successfully separate all of the combined storm mode flow and and the plants right sides and everything else. You know, because part of what led to, you know, kind of some of the major issues was was that lack of upkeep, that lack of maintenance. And that's that's why they established that, you know, the need for checking your entire system every ten years via camera to see if there's leaks, if there's, you know, blowouts, other stuff that you're not noticing. You know, and then to fall into what Danny said, you know, there there are two parts to this, one's the maintenance, the ongoing maintenance, keeping up, making sure you're, you know, doing that. But then the other part is, you know, the the consent decree gets renewed and there's certain standards that have to be met, you know, and and larger projects need to be done. For example, the one we undertook recently was the the pump station, you know, which did two things. One, it got rid of the pump station that was older, was costing us money to repair parts on, was dangerous for our staff. But two, you know, it actually took sewage out of the combined overflow that was heading, you know, had to get pumped and then sent down to the Alkasan plant that's over capacity. And moved it to Penn Hills, right, where they they have capacity for that. So, you know, it's it's two parts. It's it's a maintenance, but it's also the larger projects to ultimately get to the point where hopefully we won't be under those same consent decrees. Having to try to keep lowering that, you know, that we've gotten separated.
If only it was just us. Only, having said that, we do have an open motion. I would just make make two points before I move on. One is that infrastructure is probably one of those four things that local government deals with, whether it's your roads, your 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 sewers. Secondly, as important as it is, it's exactly the conversation you have to put babies to sleep. And so I I I appreciate the the work that that is being done there. So we do have an open motion on the floor right now. It's the question of the award to Jet Jack. That being the case, unless there's further discussion, I will begin to close the vote. Further discussion?
I can talk about this all day long.
Hearing none.
Me too.
If if there is none, I would say all in favor?
Aye.
Posed. And the motion passes without opposition. This moves us on to number twelve.
Okay, Mr. President, I move that we direct the borough manager to advertise a public hearing on a proposed zoning ordinance amendment. Wireless communication facilities within the five G R L.
Second. You know, nobody takes a second.
Anyway, infrastructure, I should just.
And as as a, any discussion?
How many hours do you have?
We've we've talked this out several times and met multiple.
Meetings. We're we're gonna, no, no, it's 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 thousands of pages. We're just not, I'm not going to say anything.
What what we have is, you know, where we can have some say, we're trying to have some say, we're limited as we've spoken at prior meetings. In terms of the supersede use in federal state laws, and so we are trying to to have positive impact of some control here in terms of over what we can. Any other discussion on the matter? Yes, sir, edit.
It's when we want to bulk it, Jerry.
Oh, there's no. There's no.
You should, excuse me, you should be good. I would think the second, the second meeting, just so we have enough time to get the legal ad, two ads in, the seven days at least. First one might be okay.
Correct. What would you have an extra two marks, but you're correct. I think, I guess it's. How long do you anticipate meeting for both of these in a hearing?
Right.
Sometimes you, I haven't typed the hearing to be the same time as your regular meeting and just. Okay, so then that's part of it too. What day of the week, what time of day?
You know, this is why we have solicitors.
Wait, when you say we should separate them out, I mean, not that these aren't really important zoning amendments, but I would say that historically, not just in virtual, but in those places. You know, a hearing on a zoning amendment lasts, lasts than ten minutes.
I'll take your word for it.
I mean, I'm not suggesting that that's the case here, and I know especially short-term rental, there may be some more people.
So here's here's what I would say in response. I'm fine with having the same day. I will not limit the the public hearing in terms of time for people to speak. You know, outside of, there's X amount, you know, I'm not going to have people talk for for, you know, an hour and a half filibuster individually. But we're certainly going to make sure everybody has the opportunity to speak. but we're certainly going to make sure everybody has the opportunity to speak, uh, as we should, right? Um, so I'm fine with doing, doing both, doing one than the other in terms of, in terms of public hearing. If it turns into a situation that goes long, this is the role that we have chosen. Um, would you want to start before seven o'clock?
No.
No, that's.
Yeah, I mean, just in terms of scheduling and other things, I don't think it's feasible for us to do that. So I think that we.
Knock them out at seven o'clock?
Yeah.
Boom, boom.
That's exactly how we have to go.
Okay.
Yeah. But I appreciate that. We do need to, to have a, a win. So thank you.
Second, second Monday in April, seven o'clock.
Yeah, so it sounds like a wonderful plan. Uh, do we note it in regard to the, to the, uh, open motion? Um, do we need to amend it to include the date?
I think the minutes will, the minutes will be updated to reflect the.
Thank you. Uh, is there any further discussion on the matter? All right, again, we are on five G, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And motion carries without opposition. Uh, moving on to number thirteen.
Mr. President, motion to the borough manager to advertise a public hearing on the proposed zoning ordinance amendment, short-term rentals. Second?
Thank you. Again, to note the, the date.
I was just gonna try to add.
I know, I'm trying to, I'm trying to figure the, the, Alex is trying to figure the.
April tenth would be the second Monday.
So the, the meeting will be, so the, the advertising for the, uh, public hearing on April tenth is, I'm, I'm almost positive that is what you said. Is that what you said?
But he said seven P M for that one, too, right?
Yes. So, all right. Uh, any discussion on the matter other than what we've already discussed? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes without opposition as well. Uh, this moves us on to are there any additional items for discussion? We'll start with staff working their way around the room. Um, beginning with, uh, sleeping babies first.
I have nothing besides what was presented in the binder, except, uh, I have really enjoyed working with Alex and Ashley and Ralph and this new team. And I feel like we're going to get some really awesome things done. Also, I've made a little bit of changes with the treasurer's report, you might have noticed, and then also in the, uh, like staff reporting as well. So definitely take a look at those.
Absolutely. We appreciate it. We appreciate having you.
I was worried to talk because I was like, oh, she might wake up.
We write this out. We talk infrastructure.
Um, Mr. President, I've talked about the sewers. The only other thing is that, uh, the road program is currently out for bid. Be ready for discussion and consideration at next month's meeting.
But if you appreciate that. Mr. Mayor, to the floor.
As always, of course, again. First of all, thanks to two, two candidates who stepped forward to, you know, serve, you know, to step up and serve the, um, borough as council members. Uh, I appreciate you both coming on. Again, to, you know, to repeat what everyone says, uh, just because one didn't get one position doesn't mean there are other, aren't other opportunities to stay on board. I, I hope you stay with that. Uh, I also wanted to thank, um, the resident town on Buell Road who sent us the letter with the video. It kind of really, kind of hit the nail on the head, like, we really need to work on that. You know, and yeah, like I said, it's a state road, that's their responsibility, but it really opened our eyes because when I saw that garbage can fly, I figured that could have been a person. You know, and then, then we've really been in a very, very track. So, and I know I got Alex put something out saying that, uh, they're going to go ahead with those electronic signs. So hopefully sometime during early summer months, we'll see some welfare and, and, you know, they'll, uh, uh, they'll do some good. People need to see that, you know, how fast they're going down those roads, right? Sometimes don't think, they realize how fast they're going. Or, or just be late. So, and so that, and then to that point too, um, I was passing the other day going on, uh, Buell and, and the person who passed me went into a driveway on Buell Road. So it's not people who are cutting through our, our borough to get to another place. It's sometimes our own residents. So I hope, you know, everyone starts, you know, mining their, their speed limit around the borough and stopping for the stop signs. And I've been passed up coming up my own street in the mic, in the my drive and so anyway, I won't get on a soapbox with that, but, um, I wanted to mention that. And, um, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to move online, keep it over at the best. Uh, Chief, anything that, that you need to add today?
I have nothing, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And, uh, you know, they'll tell everyone that we do keep them in the purr, the purr, but not enough. Action is what's necessary.
I do have a question for the chief. I saw on the report that there were fifty-eight borough ordinances that you were enforcing, um, over the past month. Can you kind of give me a breakdown as to what those violations were? Can you hear me?
Yeah, I, I can hear you. Um, I'm sorry. You said fifty-eight. What was it now?
I thought it was borough ordinance violations that were enforced. Can you provide some explanation as to what those were?
That, that's information from the mayor's report?
Yes.
Uh, I don't have the report in front of me, but I don't, um, I'm not sure which, uh, section of the report you're referring to. I, I usually list in there the, uh, total calls for service and the number of arrests, but, um, the portion with the, uh, the ordinance section, I'm not, I'm not all too familiar.
It's a matter of, of course, I think that's something people follow, follow up with. But at this point, I think it's kind of closing comments from the individuals. So, you know, in the mayor's report, certainly we can ask those questions and, and you can follow up with the chief. I don't think it's a problem. Uh, but I think at, at this point, uh, I will move to you though, if you have closing comments to pass that as well, because I, I think that's a big question to put out. I have additional closing comments that you wanted to add, bro.
All right, so.
All right, then, uh, I don't know, Ralph, I think that the, the, Ralph, your back. I, I heard, I heard sirens and I saw you go, so I know what that means. Uh, so sir, floor, floor yours?
Uh, tonight, Mr. President, I have nothing to add. Uh, thank you very much.
Thank, thank you, sir. And tell everybody, of course, we appreciate the, the work that, that they do for us to keep us all safe, just as the police. Uh, moving past, ask me, we would not want some assassins before I move forward. I don't know if you have any comments or not. Actually, you don't have to, of course, because making sure. Well, now, I will move to the inside here at Ask Young's manager.
Um, Michelle, I really covered it. I mean, I want you to make sure you look in the binder. The staff has really stepped up. We're so excited about the privilege of having an addition to the team. Ashley's remarkable. She's very friendly, outgoing, is willing to do whatever we ask of her. And, you know, take a look at the reports. Uh, you're going to see at so many levels an improved level of service to you all and to the citizens. And I just would be remiss, Sherry and Congressman, and say to both you, it's a privilege to work for this community. And the, I mean, the council agonized over this when Matt said, um, wish we had to. Uh, some of them might have thought after these long meetings, I'll pay, I'll give up my position. This is an amazing group to work with. Please reach out to me because I'll be your conduit with to keep you busy with all the things you want to do. Girl eyes and I'll be making contact with you tomorrow, uh, just to get any setup for, for bringing one forward. So thank you for council being in the position to make hard decisions like you did tonight, and I'm very appreciative of that. Thank you.
We appreciate that. And, Mr. Solicitor, anything on your, on your plate? No, Mr. President? Thank you. Uh, council, any closing comments?
Uh, I would just add or update that, uh, infrastructure tomorrow is the bid opening for the, uh, ADA accessible bathrooms and female police locker rooms. So hopefully we have a number of qualified bidders and we'll be getting that work picked off shortly.
What time is it?
One o'clock in the South of Turtle Creek Council Government's office in Red Oak.
You?
I have to hear.
You get to go last.
I, well, Valerie's not here, but I'll just mention communications, um, committee. Our newsletter is going out. Our residents should be getting it around April first. A lot of great articles in there, a lot of great information. I think our committee have really, um, gone to the next level. I think the newsletters get better and better every month. Um, but one thing of note, uh, we are doing, we're revisiting our Churchill dinner. And you'll see a one page, um, at the end of the, uh, newsletter. We're going to have a celebrate Churchill with cocktails and cuisine at Sunday, May seventh. And, um, many ways to pay for it. It's going to be a great evening. And, um, so take it, so take a look at that and then, you know, we're inviting all the residents. I know they won't all show up, but, um, we'd love to have, um, new people and, and sometimes it's the same people from the past. Again, this is after COVID. We didn't do this for a few years, but just a, just a note in the newsletter. Um, also, you know, we're stepping up with our social media, Savvy Citizen, Facebook. We're trying to, um, constantly put more information on our website and everything. So, you know, we're hoping we're getting better communication with our residents. Um, I'm also head of the climate action committee and I, I was glad Kelly's here because we're trying to do more to connect with connect. And, um, as also, um, we're working with Penn Environment. You know, there's a big issue with the plastic bags, I've mentioned this before, uh, coming down the pipe and other things too. And, um, so there's a lot going on with climate action, but that's not it.
Thank you.
Oh my gosh, yes, yes. April, oh my gosh. Also in the newsletter, April eighth is the annual Easter Bunny Parade. Thank you, Paul. And the Easter Bunny will be going around the neighborhood for four hours, beginning at ten A M. The, um, the whole route will be listed in our newsletter on our website. Um, it's kind of the same thing. We, you know, the Easter Bunny comes every year and treats for the kids and, you know, rain or shine, we will be there. The Easter Bunny will be there. The mayor will be there. And, um, so mark your count, save the date for, uh, April eighth. The Saturday, the Saturday before Easter. Thank you for reminding me.
Thank you.
I have been appointed to chair the deer committee. And, uh, other municipalities have decided not to deal with this. Some municipalities have. Uh, we're going to hit it again. We had a committee pre-COVID and went through a process that didn't result in, 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 in action by the council. We're going to try it again. So, uh, we are having a public meeting. It will be at the Blackwood Civic Association on Thursday, April twentieth. This will be, uh, we'll have more information on the website and elsewhere. Uh, but this is an opportunity for the committee. Matt and I make up the committee at this point. Uh, this will be an opportunity for us to hear what people have to say on this topic. Uh, we really thought that was the better way to start this time. We want to, you know, get a sense of where, where people are pro or con. As, as most people know, we have total opposition to anything being done to the deer. Take all the deer and make them go away somehow. And everything in between. So we need to hear from you. So, uh, Thursday, April twelfth, seven o'clock, Blackwood Civic Association. We chose that because wanted to be sure we could accommodate a larger number of people. We have no idea how many are going to show up, but that is the best way to approach it. Also, they have, uh, group parking, you know, which are many more parking spaces. So that's what we're doing. Will we be putting that on our website?
Oh, yeah.
And it'll be everywhere we possibly can.
County committee will get, will get access.
Yes, checking.
Yeah, I guess that, uh, that leaves your ability to go home, uh, between, uh, the next things that I say. Uh, so I will be brief. Um, you know, first of all, again, I, I, I can only kind of restate to both, both of you how much I appreciate your willingness to, to serve. Uh, I, you know, I did have a chance to, of course, we would hold you directly. Uh, and we're lucky, if you, you both love Churchill, but Churchill's lucky to have both of you. So I think that is one of the, one of the clear takeaways. And it continues, right? Like, most of us have been appointed to serve at some point in time. So the willingness to serve is very important. Um, secondly, on the bunny parade, I'm crossing my fingers that my daughter is not outgrown bunny. I lost out on, I took her to Disney and like in one year, a year ago, she wanted to do like the whole princess thing. I took her a month ago. She looked at me like I was an idiot for even thinking. So I'm crossing my fingers that we still have enough bunny love. And then my very last thing before I, I intend most to adjourn. Um, for those of you both in, in, throughout the community, um, Woodland Hills Youth Soccer Association, as spring comes, we are, we continue to, uh, move forward with our soccer program. So if you don't know, we have a, a, a pretty good soccer program here in Woodland Hills. Uh, and Churchill is, is a big part of that. Uh, we, it's, it's very, it's kind of low cost, so it's not, not a cost thing. Um, but it really is a chance for kids to get out and, and learn the game. Um, I particularly coach, uh, girls in, in the twenty twelve. There'll be young girls who are, who were born in twenty twelve, you know, and if they want to get out and play some soccer, I, I've coached for fifteen years and I'm happy to, to do it here in Woodland Hills. So, uh, you can go to Woodland Hills Youth Soccer Association if you want to do that, or you can reach, reach out to me. And, uh, happy to help. And if not, if you're just interested, you want to volunteer, or you have a kid who's never, who's little and hasn't had a chance to run around in the field. You know, we've got basics from Forest Hill to Churchill to Little Catholic Place that we try to do this. So, uh, that being the case, I have nothing else to say. I'll leave it at having St. Patrick's Day. My wife would kill me if I did. And, uh, outside of that, I intend most to adjourn. So move. Thank you. So second?
Second.
Game's set, match, thank you very much. Good afternoon.